Thank you, Michelle. All right. Good evening. It is August fourteenth and this is the business meeting of the Middle Smithfield Township Supervisors. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Stood by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Oh, let me just spread the pen. We'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July twenty fifth. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Make a motion to approve the agenda. Does Board of Supervisors have any amendments?
No.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Make a motion to approve the minutes of July twenty fourth?
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Make a motion to approve the minutes of August eleventh?
Sure.
Uh, excuse me, eighth?
Eighth.
Motion second. Uh, any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Pat, could we please have a report on executive sessions?
Sure. The board met briefly before this evening's meeting to discuss real estate and legal matters. No decisions were made, no votes were taken.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there any public comment on non-agenda items from anyone on Zoom or in person?
Yes.
Oh, yes, Debbie.
I just want to shamelessly promote the fact that it's Bushville Emergency Course sixtieth anniversary and ask you to please put November the fifteenth aside. Our live entertainment will be Wade Preston, who starred on Broadway as Billy Joel for its entire run of the show. More information to come.
And would there be sponsorships available?
Yes, there would be sponsorships available. They will be coming to you short.
All right, and a flyer as well, right?
And the flyer as well, yes. And we would invite four or two again.
Uh, seriously, what was the date again?
November fifteenth.
Fifteenth, okay.
I'll just, I'll share the flyer tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
You have to say the date, yeah.
Okay, is, um, any, any other public comment on non-agenda items?
For some, I mean, minutes on the twenty fourth, if that wasn't here, what was this guy Jacob Morris, what was his issue?
I'm sorry, what is his what?
I mean, minutes from the twenty fourth, the last one, on the bottom, he says Jacob Morris was talking about HOA.
Yes.
What can you do to see this?
Uh, leisure lands.
And so he was conducting the board to try to help with the objectives.
He, he, his suggestion was that the township provide education for HOA members to make them better HOA members.
But we vote for HOA members.
That is correct.
So it sounds like they're voting for the wrong people and God. Okay.
So he, he was, he came, he brought the information, uh, he, he came to the township that week and we met and he had information there. Um, and he is in the process of trying to find grant funding to fund this sort of thing.
Okay, probably need some executive leadership skills.
That was it, yeah. And CAI, that organization actually provides it. You know, we found a few other organizations that deal with HOAs also. So there's nothing preventing them from going and doing it. Um, he was just looking for someone to fund it to make it more palatable for volunteers who are already volunteering to not have to fund this or the HOAs.
Okay.
So, all right, is there any other, uh, public comment on non-agenda items? All right, uh, just a couple of announcements. The end of July saw the successful end to the My Work program from the Office of Vocational Abilities, so we thank them. Um, and thank you to the commissioners who provided approval for another ten years for the Lurde Zone, so that completes the cycle. Thank you to all the Community Day vendors because the Parks and Recreation Department had a very successful Community Day and thank you to those that attended and participated and thank you to all who came to the Memory Makers as well as the sponsors for that. And we put some programs on the side, uh, just in case anybody wanted to see what it was all about. And, uh, the liaison for the Historical Commission, Holly Dennis, um, got a bunch of these pocket constitutions, which are great. So that's all I have unless the board has any announcements they'd like to make. Oh, wait, there's one more. Does the board have any other announcements they want to make? So I saw this, like, I saw the email from the, from Oak Grove today, but I, I must have missed that one, but I saw this for when, uh, Vicki was putting these on the HOA boards. So we had a Oak Grove meeting the other day and we were talking about a cashless system and the first thing I thought when I saw free mulch for everybody is that, that's one way to go. Cashless is to just have free mulch. So, um, loaded or not, so, uh, you'll find those flyers over on the side. Um, there being no more announcements, I would like to make a motion to accept the department and committee reports.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right.
And the department and committee reports are available to you over on the side table or as always included with the minutes in their entirety. Is there any correspondence?
We have a correspondence from John R. Spoonover from Williamson, Delaware. And Mr. Spoonover, thanks Annette and James, they, you may have seen the hometown hero banners that are along two oh nine at the community center. Uh, well, John Spoonover relation to a Colonel John is also, um, on one of the posters and an extra one was sent to his family and member of himself and his service to the country. So they, they did send a nice thank you letter.
It's a very old name in this area. Thank you, Michelle. And that brings us to the treasures report.
With the motion to pay for the general account, one hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars, eighty-eight cents.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Motion for a steward count, ninety-one thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and thirty-five cents.
Oh, second, any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Uh, so listeners' report?
Uh, thank you. The one item listed on our report this evening is the zoning ordinance amendment. As the board may recall, we've spent some time putting together comprehensive zoning ordinance amendment. Uh, we forwarded to the county and the township planning commissions, we did receive comments back from the county. Uh, I believe the purpose of this evening is to, uh, at least briefly or generally go through some of the uh, comments from the county to see if the board wanted to make some changes, uh, to the draft ordinance and resubmit to the county for them to review again or to proceed toward that or title. Uh, I provided an email, circulated an email to the board, kind of listing the comments from the county that are probably more relevant and pertinent for the board to consider, along with the most recent one regarding, uh, the resort um, use, uh, the one, the, the most recent comment from the county was to include the, uh, recent conditional use you had for the resort, uh, complex, barrage, I believe it's, uh, Oakeno Palace.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that would probably be an appropriate one to include in, uh, that section of the ordinance to include that as an additionally approved resort complex within the township.
Yeah, I agree with that.
The board agreeable to adding that? Yes.
Yes. Okay.
And then, why don't we, my email and kind of list, do you want to go through my email or you want to go through the county's review letter itself?
I think, yeah, I think your email because it highlights the, um, your last one.
Okay, so in number five of the county's review letter, they reference a possible inconsistency with agricultural retail uses uh, provided for in the Schedule of Uses. Specifically, um, the accessory retail agricultural use is permitted as an accessory use to agricultural general and agricultural intensive. Um, specifically, they call out in the C-two district, we do not, at least as it's currently proposed, in the C-two district does not permit agriculture retail as an accessory use. However, agricultural, agricultural, uh, general and intensive are both permitted in the C-two. So their comment is, we're allowing agriculture retail as an accessory use to both of those uses in the C-two, but we're specifically preventing it or prohibiting it within that district. Um, whether or not it's an inconsistency, I don't know, it's just you're specifically prohibiting that access, that specific accessory use within the C-two. Uh, but if you wanted to allow for it because those two, the agriculture general and agriculture intensive are both permitted in the C-two, if you also want to permit that accessory agricultural retail use in the C-two, we can do that. It would just be an amendment or a change to the Schedule of Uses. Does everyone understand that?
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll let that, that's, that's up to the board.
Agricultural retail in C-one, I think, is already happening.
Well, you, you do allow for it. It's permitted in C-one. It's the C-two that is, is different.
I don't have a problem with the access for you.
And you have a comment?
And not having it as a use by right?
Right.
Correct. Agricultural retail is an accessory use to both agricultural general, agriculture intensive and nurseries, actually.
Okay.
So is ever.
What is your feeling, Mr. Zoney?
I don't know.
Huh?
I'm okay.
Okay.
You do have that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ed. I didn't see you.
What's the definition of agricultural use?
Do you have it in front of you or should I open it up?
No, agricultural. Second, there are two different types. There's general, there's intensive, and there's retail. Uh,
Yeah.
General is the cultivation of the soil and the raising and harvesting of the products of the soil, including but not limited to the nursery use and also included the customarily accessory livestock keeping of use, which includes the housing grazing or breeding of grazing animals or poultry, livestock, birds or fowl. And then the agriculture general use does not include the agricultural intensive. And then the definition for agricultural intensive is the commercial production of agricultural, agronomic, horticultural, silvicultural and/or aquacultural crops and/or commodities for market. The livestock, the livestock keeping of as a principal use or the commercial raising of mushrooms shall also be considered agricultural intensive. And then agricultural or agriculture retail is a seasonal selling or offering for sale and retail by vendors who have homegrown vegetables, produce, flowers, that they are offering for sale or have themselves prepared homemade commodities, i.e. jams, jellies, canned pickles, that are being offered for retail sale occurring in a pre-designated area.
So essentially, uh, in the C-one, you can buy agricultural products or resell, but you cannot move it in C-two.
The way it's currently prepared, yes, the agriculture retail accessory use is not permitted, is proposed not to be permitted in C-two, but is in C-one. And actually, they're discussing whether or not they want to allow for it in C-two. Because, because agriculture general and agriculture intensive are both permitted in the C-two.
Now, how much land is involved in, in, in the C-two? I mean, how much land do we have zone in C-two?
Right.
Is there, is there enough to even consider, you know, renting crops?
I mean, what is the requirement by, what is the required, I just want to understand the question. What is, are you asking, what is the required size of the parcel in order to match this use? Are you asking how, how much?
If you're agricultural crop on a commercial basis, you know, an acre, it's not worth your time.
There are fifty-five acre parcels and greater in the C-two area.
Parcels that are fifty-five acres or more?
Or more.
Oh.
We just, we just sold one four-hundred acre C-two parcel last year.
However, it would not be suitable for agriculture, though.
Most of, most of.
It depends, yeah.
Not suitable for agriculture.
Correct, yeah. That, that's what I mean.
With that one four oh two.
There's almost no place that would be.
I shouldn't say that because I don't know how to grow grapes and that looks like probably an episode of kind of neighborhood.
And that's not necessarily a consideration. Yeah, you can't, it's not necessarily.
Although, I mean, if somebody has a C-two parcel or he wants to raise something like herbs, so, um, that could be done.
So does the board want to allow for the accessory agricultural retail use in the C-two to address the county's comment with respect to that?
Yeah, remind me again if it's a use by right or a condition use that is.
The agriculture retail, I believe, is an accessory use to both the agriculture general and agriculture intensive and both of those principal uses are permitted in the C-two.
I see.
That was their comment, that it was a little inconsistent because you allow for the principal use, but you're not allowed that accessory use.
Okay, I am okay with it.
All right, it's so permitted.
Whoops.
And, um, comment number six in the county's review letter, uh, comments, the number of chickens permitted on a five to ten acre parcel of land, uh, is proposed to be seventy, up to seventy-five chickens and the county suggests reconsidering that number.
Do you remember offhand, Mark, how many animal units were allowed per acre?
So, in the agriculture general, keep, the keeping of chickens or similar poultry on less than ten acres of contiguous land shall be subject to the following requirements. No more than twenty-five chickens or similar poultry shall be permitted on a lot size between two and five acres. And then no more than seventy-five chickens or similar poultry shall be permitted on a lot size between five and ten acres. There are sections addressing just smaller parcels.
Fifty-seven. Seventy pound chicken here. We start talking about movement, that again.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I believe these numbers came from the zoning office. This, I think this was already in the ordinance when I got my hands on it. I don't think I changed the number of animals. But it sounds like the county is suggesting considering a lower, lower number.
Well, I'm, I'm lowering the number, but they didn't say lowering it to what? I'm not a chicken farmer, so I don't know what the appropriate amount of chicken.
Well, you want to talk about that at workshop tomorrow?
Yeah, you might want to reach out to Judy, uh, because I think that, I think she spent some time on these sections when she was putting it together.
I remember we did, the first group, or the representative's forms of chicken. Bill of, or hopes of building the greatest chicken, chicken, that was pretty thick.
Well, and then the number of roosters was limited to because of the noise. Yeah, to zero to, because of the noise. So, all right, I'm suggesting that we, um, look at some other things and talk about this at workshop tomorrow, right? Okay.
Okay. Um, comment number eight in the county review letter, uh, references the possible need to update Appendix C, which is related to the functional classification of streets for Middle Smithfield Township. Uh, yeah, we can evaluate that, provide, um, an order.
Agree.
Comments nine and eleven in the county's review letter suggests adding additional more specific conditions provisions for certain uses. Um, if you remember, when we went through this, I had added, some of your uses were lacking, so I added some additional provisions and, and, uh, restrictions on those uses. Now, I didn't do it for every use, uh, so I suspect the county is referring to a number of the uses that we didn't touch. Where you have simply, remember there were some uses where you just simply have, comply with all state and federal law. And that's it. Uh, I suspect they're maybe referencing some of those uses that I didn't touch.
Yeah.
We can, that might be.
They're saying it right here, shooting ranges, schools, detention facilities and treatment centers. So, yeah.
I mean, that's up to the board. We can go through and go through a little bit more specific, uh, uses for those or we can, that could be one of those cleanup items down the road.
I think we need to go to a long session.
So that'll be at the workshop tomorrow also.
Okay. Uh, number ten in the review letter suggests certain additions to the provisions for data centers. If you remember, uh, I did include a section on data centers, uh, since um, adding that section in the ordinance, Penn Future has been circulating a draft ordinance around, that's found as way within Monroe County municipalities, uh.
I think they sent with this letter, I believe they did.
They may have, they may have.
It's attached, I mean.
So, I mean, it's up, it's up to the board if you want to incorporate some of those additional provisions. I do know that that draft version has a lot, it's, it's fairly lengthy and robust, uh. I think it covers a lot of what we have in here for data centers, but it, it does include some additional provisions. Is the board interested in supplementing?
Yes. Yeah, I think it's.
I think for sure.
I think we should look at, I'd like to see Penn Future. The county also has a draft, uh, ordinance for that too, that we could look at.
Well, they're just saying their comment before, new model ordinance for data centers, says recently been published, I don't say theirs or.
Yeah, it came out, it probably came out the last month or two. Uh,
I think potential investors in something would appreciate more detail we can give.
Right.
Uh, number fourteen, uh, the county, uh, comments on the sign provisions.
Yeah.
We didn't touch much of the signs, but they comment on the regulations of, of touching the content of signs and that's always a tricky situation.
Right.
And I would suggest, we're not really touching anything. I would suggest leaving it go for now.
Okay, so if we're changing other things in here, what the suggestion was at the Monroe County Planning Commission meeting was, you can't say something like, uh, you can't regulate something and say, we're regulating Realtor signs by doing this, like a time period and all that. But you can use a different word and say something like, we would allow a four-by-four sign on a property that is for sale until such time that is sold. That's what they're.
It's always, it's always a tricky scenario for zoning ordinances and, and how you zone for certain types of signs without somehow incorporating the content. Yes, there is case law out there that says otherwise, but if you, the problem is temporary sign, I mean, temporary signs, political signs, real estate signs, they're all, everybody's probably does it. They all are regulated via zoning and they reference the content. Um, and, you know, we can get a little bit lost in the weeds in this discussion, but, um, the options are, you know, not include the content at all, which makes it difficult for the township to, to carve out certain temporary types of signs that, um, are typically zoned for, like you said, the real estate, the political signs and other types of temporary signs that it's hard to zone for without referencing to some extent content. I'm not telling you, um, I mean, I guess if, if the board is, wants to open that can and start looking through your sign provisions, we can. It's just, uh, that's, that's, that's an interesting exercise if that's what you want to feel.
But we, we just went through a sign ordinance, but two years ago, three years ago, I mean.
Yes, and it says things like.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think the county had its crack at it then.
They, that was their crack then too.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think we can.
So now that.
We'll see what happens.
Yeah, just say thank you and move on from it.
And then number fifteen, uh, comment number fifteen in the review letter suggests adding an outer buffer for weapon buffers, uh, or outer, I don't know. Um, and again, this is a decision policy for the board. I think you've had, you've discussed this maybe when you looked at your stormwater man ordinance, uh, whether or not you want to include, you, right now you have an inner buffer in the zoning ordinance, if you want to include the outer buffer or, or make it consistent with, uh, whatever the current stormwater ordinance is. Do you want me to take a look at that as well?
Yes, yes. To see how, how it would match.
Because is, are they concerned that we're not matching our stormwater ordinance or are they concerned that we're not in line with the county stormwater? Because remember, we didn't, we didn't go out to where the county.
Correct, we wanted to be consistent with the hours, not the.
Correct, yeah, so it, it remained consistent with the prior ordinance, so we did stormwater update, so.
Right, not the count.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look at their comments, check out trade, but image ordinances, off my thoughts. Okay. Uh, the other comments, I don't think, uh, unless the board had a specific one you want to discuss, but those were the ones that jumped out at me, at me when I reviewed their comment letter. So, what I have written down with respect for the county's comments is, one, I'll add the, uh, Oakeno Palace, the Raj Resort Complex, um, to the, to the section listing existing resorts within the township. You're going to discuss during the work session, uh, the number of chickens to be permitted within five, for five to ten acres.
A work session is eight AM tomorrow for anyone who would like to.
Uh, Appendix C, Ben's going to take a look at that with respect to, uh, road, roadways within township. Data centers, I can supplement what we've already established for a data center use uh, based upon the Penn Teacher and Monroe County, uh, form that's come out. In your work session, you're going to discuss whether or not you want to add additional specific provisions associated with some of the uses called out in the county's review letter. And the outer buffer comment with respect to wetlands, Ben's going to take a look at that, period of stormwater and see if we need to make any adjustments to that. I covered it.
Yep.
And I already made the pencil, did the change to the Schedule of Uses associated with the agriculture retail accessory use being permitted within the C-two.
Okay.
All right?
Right.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding the zoning ordinance amendment at this time?
Michelle, there's an attach to this handout for you and the, uh, data center.
Oh, the form, I had it. Um, what I can do is, I can compare it to what's already in here and, and see which ones we'll get a supplement with. Um, I mean, already in here, we have a provision with respect to electrical power, uh, utility review. Um, I believe we covered water and sound, but we can supplement with, you know, what, what's in that core model that came out from the county. You know, what, what's in that core model that came out from the county. All right, is there anything else from the board on the zoning at this point?
No, thank you.
Okay. That's it, under my agenda item this evening. However, I do have a brief, uh, executive session following the meeting as well tonight. It will be brief.
Okay. Thank you. Engineers report.
Alright, so the first item under my report for tonight, uh, noted late, uh, bridge update, uh, I don't have too much. Uh, to update on that, uh, matter, uh, again, we left off, I think it was just prior to our last meeting. That the community had, um, signed an agreement with a contractor, uh, to perform, um. Bridge repair work that they were expecting to start. Uh, mid-August and end by, uh, end of October. I haven't gotten any further updates as to whether or not anything has started at this time. Uh, we've been in touch with, uh, community board members about, uh, coordinating a meeting. Here at the township office, um, possibly sometime next week, if not the week after, so, uh, once we get a date set to that, I'll, I'll let you know. Uh, just so that we can get updates on. Uh, the logistics for that, making sure the emergency personnel have been notified and are made aware of. How that may affect their access to and from that portion of the community. Uh, and just impacts for township to access the waste water treatment plant up there as well. Um, the, before we go on, any questions on that topic? Okay. Uh, the second item under my report, uh, is required, uh, regarding utility relocation reimbursement agreement. Uh, Pendot had sent over a, a template. Uh, of this agreement, it's, um, basically they said it's, uh, standard. Language that their Harrisburg office has developed for all these, uh, similar types of projects. Um, the requirement for staying on track with their accelerated pipelines where they cover seventy-five percent of the reimbursement for. Uh, design, construction oversight, but also for the construction costs associated with. Um, your sanitary sewer relocation, um, the date that this would need to be adopted by October twenty-third, is the date that I've been given for that. Um, I did get a chance to read through it, um, I had a few comments that I already sent to Pendot just for clarification on. Uh, they do incorrectly reference the township's address. Um, which will, uh, resolve, uh, and then also, it's really on, let me see which page it is here, it's, uh. It's items seven through. Uh, ten, I believe it is, yeah, seven through ten, it's on like the third page here. Um, that really detail the amounts, they are consistent with the cost estimates that we've provided to them. Uh, there's basically three numbers that are listed in these sections. Um, the twenty-seven thousand, three hundred nineteen dollars, ninety-six cents on their line, or item seven. Uh, that is the amount, um, that we're estimating for our total cost as. Costs we've already done for all of the construction plan preparation, all the conflict resolution coordination and that has been done to date, so. Vast majority has been done. It also covers a thousand dollars of crossers expenses for them to basically shut. Off the pump station, bring, and bring that back online, then support during construction. And then what we're estimating for our observer to be out, just make sure that the work's completed properly. Uh, so that's what that number is associated with, uh, under eight A, this one fifty-five hundred. That's the estimated. Cost for, uh, Pendot to complete the. Uh, portions of the sanitary force main relocation and a small section of concrete encasement where there's a shallow crossing. Um. And then there's a third one here, it's, uh, under ten, it's this twenty thousand, four eighty-nine, ninety-seven. That's, that's the seventy-five percent that they would be reimbursing the township for all of the design, cross which costs, destruction observation. The, the language within each of those sections isn't really clear and they admit as much, it's kind of boilerplate language. They said if we wanted to alter this to clarify what those numbers are associated with. Um, they would have to go to Harrisburg for their review, so I guess Pat, Pat had a chance to read through it, give other comments?
So, I did and I, I kind of circled those provisions as well. Like anything, I don't, I don't. Like. The form, but it's a Pendot form and any changes to this is not going to be a, a, a light lift. It's just certain things you need to be aware of. Uh, the fact that, number one, are we meeting that accelerated, what they refer to as the so, the.
Yes.
Accelerated milestone data. Because that looks like a pretty hard.
I don't, I don't agree. That's the one thing I called out as eleven A. I, I don't agree with that whatsoever. We, we should, if Pendot wants to pay. An early completion bonus, that's up to them, but we, we're not a party to the agreement. Therefore, we, we shouldn't have a share in that cost.
Sorry, say that again, her.
Eleven A.
Which, which part of it?
All accelerated milestone related to meth utility shall pay. The department twenty-five percent of the actual cost estimated to be thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So what they're, what they're saying, and you're right, it's, it's not easy to follow. But I believe what they're saying is, there, as long as the township meets the accelerated milestone dates. Yes, Pendot will pay, or the state will pay seventy-five percent associated with the. Uh, incorporated construction costs, right?
Yeah, I have a, a few, yes, I, I raised the exact same question you're raising, Mike, with them. So I, I have emails when I asked them, I feel I just got them.
So the, the, the twenty-five percent in that section is, would be the remaining. Uh, twenty-five percent.
Of that one fifty.
Correct, correct, so. Just to give a sense of timeframes for this, so. What they're, the date that they have right now for completion on this is basically December of twenty-eight. Is when they're expecting this project to be done, basically at that time. Um, and actually before they even award. The bid to the contractor, um, I mean, just getting his language here real quick, make sure I just put, uh.
Sorry, it's going to be a verbative on here. You will, this is from David Reader at Pendot. I asked about item eight A.
Right.
How is the township being aware of the actual construction costs as opposed to the one fifty-five hundred estimate that we provided? You will be asked to confer with the utility bid price of the chosen highway contractor. So. The township will be informed of wherever that comes in at before they get authorized to proceed forward. Then it's only after the, the project is complete, which are, again, estimating to be this December twenty-twenty-eight timeframe. When an invoice would be sent to the township to cover twenty-five percent of that portion of the work. And then township has a year to basically invoice. Pendot to cover seventy-five percent of the cost that you've incurred between. Our office and Crosser. To this point, basically to assist on this. Does that make sense? That's, that's basically the outline of how this would happen to see through.
Right.
And, and we met the, the buppers.
And they said that we'd have met, yeah, they said that we've met all of the accelerated milestone dates and only one that's. Coming up is this October twenty-third one for this agreement, that's.
And December of twenty-twenty-eight. Is what they considered to be an accelerated milestone date?
Well, they're not holding themselves to it, sorry.
I could do it with a pocket knife and get.
What was that?
I could do it with a pocket knife and be done by then. Okay.
Sure. Is the state gonna ask the township to pay you the cost for relocating the electric line?
No, this is strictly sewer.
This is strictly the township's utility sewer.
No.
Yes, they'd be going that way on any of that. I mean, it looks like you have until, what was it, October twenty-third? Um.
I mean, it, it seems reasonable. I mean, there's nothing to, like you say, any kind of change you want to make. It's not gonna happen, you know? I mean, we know we're on the hook for thirty-seven thousand dollars. Less whatever soft cost that we incurred, or seventy-five percent of them. And so, it is what it is, I think. You know, the works can proceed. Um. Again, you know, the township. And all of our EMS and fire providers have posted this project, but they're gonna proceed anyway, so.
Alright, so I guess at this point, I don't. Considering is the revision, on the very least, based on the address, I'll get that corrected.
Right.
Have, is there anything else? Uh.
No, I think it's, like I said, getting Pendot to change anything on this is not.
Right.
I, I'd be surprised, unless, unless we want to get more specific and get clarity with respect to basically paragraph seven, eight, ten. And eleven.
Well, alright, now you bring up a point. What if, what if the actual cost exceeds the rest?
So if it comes in at like two hundred thousand, great rush, right, like what the township says, no.
Right, I mean, we're agreeing to thirty-seven and change.
Well, if you read this. If all accelerated milestone dates are met, the utility shall pay to the department, utility being the township. So pay to the department twenty-five percent of the actual costs.
Right.
Estimated to be thirty-seven, so. It's gonna be. Whatever the actual cost is, it's gonna be measuring. Age.
Um, yeah, I guess the question then is, how many, how many contractors, like how many bids are they getting?
And there is the subject too, what if the actual, I mean, we've seen it in, in work that we bid. What if it's three times the rest?
We've seen it with the Marshalls Creek bypass.
Right, what if it's three times the rest?
Yeah.
We could ask to include and not to exceed.
I, I think I would prefer.
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent not to exceed the one hundred and fifty thousand.
We could, we could ask, we can see how they respond.
Or we have to.
They have to done this enough and had this exact issue come up, right, there, there has to have been a case where.
Right.
Something has blown an estimate out of water, it may pass pushback from.
Right.
Something, right, yeah, I guess that.
I, I think that risk should be, should be put on Pendot, not us. Particularly since we're opposed to the project.
Okay.
Okay, maybe just can we call? Sort of talk through that before you, before you retire.
Alright, so there's no action really at this point, that's all, follow with them and then, you know, next meeting, maybe after, have a. Revised agreement before you consider.
Great, thanks.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, there is no old business, so that brings us to new business. Um. Mark, I believe this is you.
Motion authorized release and retainment fee for Raj Investments. LLC conditional use for resort contracts.
And. In the amount of.
Two hundred and eighty-one ninety-eight.
Centers. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Also make a motion authorized release of the container fees for Monroe Pipeline, LLC, T-Birds One. Subdivision Sketch Plan, and that's four hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents.
There.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
And. Also authorized release of the retainer piece for Evant Group LLC, Retschel Ball Chateau Sketch Plan. And that is. Three hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second, any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, is there any public comment? Anybody on Zoom or anybody present? Anyone? All right. Everyone's favorite motion.
Make a motion.
Mark's favorite, Mark's favorite motion, yeah. A second. Comments or questions? We are adjourned. All in favor?
Right.
We are adjourned.